...to discuss the potential transportation expenditure plan. I'm Don Tatson, I'm the Chair of these meetings, and again, welcome everyone here. We'll begin with public comment for items that are not on the Authority's agenda this evening. Does anyone have a public comment? All right, seeing none. Then the next item is the approval of the minutes from the special meeting of March 9th.
No approval.
Okay. All right. Hang on, no, no, I'm just trying to say, actually, the minutes weren't there, as it says, they'll be brought forward.
We still approve them.
Right, so never mind then. I know, you're very good, yes. Okay, moving right along.
Too many minutes.
So that brings us to item 1.1, there are, we have five items to discuss tonight regarding the TEP, and I would also direct everyone's attention to the handouts, because these are relevant to a number of the items we have in front of us, and I'd also note that at our last meeting, and for the public, we scheduled another special meeting of the Authority to occur one week from this evening, starting at 6:00 AM.
6:00 PM.
PM, I'm sorry. I'm always up at 6:00 AM. Yeah. Starting at 6:00 PM in this room, and so we invite you all to come to that meeting. So, beginning with item 1.1, which is to receive comments and recommendations for changes to the initial draft plan from the RTPCs, Mr. Nuehme, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members. Over the past several weeks, the RTPCs have met several times to discuss the draft DEP Virgin 1.1. In front of you, as Don mentioned, there is a handout related to this item, and the colored table, looks like this, shows the changes that were requested by the RTPCs to the funding amounts in the DEP. You will also see letters from Transplan, Transpac, SWAT, commenting on various topics in the draft DEP. WIC-TAC letter has already been included in your packet. I will go through the changes shown in the table and ask the RTPC managers to summarize any comments from their subregions on the policies and descriptions. We have Jamar from Transplan and John Nimeth from WIC-TAC, who will describe the changes from East and West County. I think, Dave, you are going to do SWATs, and Julie.
Unless you want to do.
You're probably gonna do Central County.
Or Dave.
Or Dave. The table in the handout breaks down the funding amounts by subregion. As you recall, back in May, we provided each subregion with a funding target based on their proportional share of 20-30 population, and the RTPCs gave us their input in July of, and August of 2015. Since that time, we've been working with EPAC members, the PMA group, the city managers, BART, and others, which resulted in an agreement on the BART cars funding, the introduction of the Community Development Incentive Program, and the Innovation Program. Since this is basically zero-sum games, funding those programs at higher levels meant that we needed to reduce funding on the other categories. That is why we have Regional Choice category in the draft DEP. We wanted to get the RTPC's inputs on which categories to argument their funding. The red font in the table shows the changes. In Central County, I'll just go through them quickly, in terms of the number changes, before I turn it back to you. In Central County, they had $3.2 million in Regional Choice category, and they asked to basically argument the return-to-source or the local streets maintenance and improvements by $17 million, the paratransit, or the transit for seniors and people with disabilities by $10 million, and reducing the Innovation Program by $1.8 million while leaving the rest, $5 million, for future subregional transportation priorities. They also requested that the description of the, of the Subregional Transportation Priorities category, or what was called Regional Choice, be broad enough to allow them to expand, to expend the funds on commute alternatives if they need to in the future. In Southwest, SWAT decided to keep its modest amount in the Regional Choice category, which was about $3.7 million, to keep it unprogrammed, and requested that the name to be changed to Subregional Transportation Priorities. In West County, WIC-TAC had $19.7 million in Regional Choice category. They asked that $10 million be used to argument transportation for seniors and people with disabilities funding, with $9.7 be kept unprogrammed for future needs. They also asked that the I-80 category be split basically into two, that's category number five in the table, one for the I-80 interchange improvements to fund projects like the San Pablo Dem Road Phase II and Central Avenue, with $60 million, and one for the high-capacity transit for $20 million, with the remainder $30 million to be reprogrammed to transit, bus transit oper, operations and improvements, excuse me. In East County, they had $16.7 million in Regional Choice category. They recommended programming $7.7 million to paratransit, $2 million for additional safe routes for children, safe transportation for children, and $2 million for pet bike facilities, with the remaining five to stay in the Regional Choice for future needs. So with that, I'll ask John basically to start giving you an update on some of the other comments that WIC-TAC have made.
And if I could just clarify to make sure I understand, that the changes we see in the expenditure plan reflect only proposals made by the RTPCs, they don't reflect EPAC input except as it was considered by the RTPCs, or staff or consultant input?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. Welcome.
John. It's not, you wanna sit down?
All right, good evening. Well, as Hesham mentioned, we did move $10 million out of the Regional Choice, but, John Nimeth with WIC-TAC, we moved $10 million out of the Regional Choice category into the transportation for seniors and disabled, leaving $9.7 million in the Regional Choice. I think that was partly to have some flexibility for the future, although the Board did say that they reserve the right to potentially allocate that over the next few weeks, if that would be helpful to consensus-building as a part of this process, so it could be either/or. And then, as Hesham mentioned, there was a recommendation to, to separate the interchange category from the high-capacity transit category, I think partly because the high-capacity transit may not be so explicitly tied to I-80, and also, I think, just to make sure that there were sufficient funds to be able to complete the interchange projects, because they have been kind of longstanding priorities within West County, and having them as their own distinct category, I think, would help to ensure that that money would be available for that purpose. They did also request that the non-rail transit category be renamed to Bus Operations and Improvements. I think there's a recognition that transportation, while it's evolving and changing, and none of us really know what the future's gonna look like, they feel like there's a high, high degree of confidence that over the next five, 10, 20 years, there's still gonna be buses in West County, and at least for the constituents in West County, having some clarity that this will be able to help the bus service could be important for those folks, so I think that probably just about sums it up. I know Hesham covered, covered the money issue, but if there are any questions.
I just had one quick question. You'll note on the page that was just handed out to us with the expenditure plan, they renamed Category 11, Bus and Non-Rail Transit Enhancements. Do you think that would satisfy WIC-TAC?
Probably so. Probably so.
Could we at least go with Bus and Other Non-Rails, since Bus?
Yeah, yes, yes, yes. Okay, are there questions of the Speaker, Commissioner Abelson?
I, I'm not clear that that is true, that it would satisfy West County to call it Bus and Non-Rail, or Other Non-Rail. I mean, the point is, Bus is Bus, I think. That's what I think we were saying at our meeting.
Hard for me to say whether that would be good enough, I don't know.
That is what we said, we said Bus, okay? So, whether or not we can change it to say that we, it's hard for me to say we didn't, we said Bus, that is what we said, right? And so to change it to say we said Non-Bus is not what we said.
So, could I suggest that WIC-TAC consider whether the wording of Bus and Other Non-Rails is acceptable, because if not, I think there are other RTPCs that will be upset if it's limited only to Bus. So we'll wind up having to create another category.
Well, that's not all, I mean, to me, that's not an issue.
That's what I'm saying, I'm just asking WIC-TAC to discuss.
Well, we had already, we were already doing that, and we didn't like it, is the reason I'm suggesting it. I mean, we can do it again, but I find it irritating to be asked, actually, to do that, actually, because a Bus is a Bus is a Bus. It's not Other Non-Rail, or, you know, whatever the euphemism is for anything but a Bus.
Okay. Commissioner Durant, then Commissioner.
Yeah, I, I think I need to understand what the issue is. Obviously, we weren't all at WIC-TAC, but for those of us who aren't in WIC-TAC, I think the $50 million that's allocated, for example, for Central County, isn't necessarily defined as all, forever and all times, as only Bus, so, I don't know, help, help me understand.
Well, help me.
Let me finish, let me finish.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. If the, if there's collective concurrence that the intention of this category is that it is only Bus, then I think we, we just sort of need a collective understanding agreement of it, and then say the words, and then we don't have to go back and forth on this anymore.
Okay, that is what we originally said, it got changed, so we said it again, and, so we've said it twice, actually, that it was Bus, and.
I'm sorry, we who?
West County.
Okay.
So why, I would now want to go back and say, did we really mean that? It's kind of.
I'm not, I'm not, so we're clear, I'm not questioning what West County said, I'm questioning what the rest of the people who are gonna sign off on line 11 meant. If all of us meant Bus, then we can all capitulate to the language that West County wants and use the word Bus. But if there was a notion that this category might involve Other Non-Rail Alternatives, then it doesn't seem rational to just say Bus. So that's part of what I'm asking, not questioning West County, I think we're clear, 100%.
Okay, and maybe we do need more, another category, I don't, I mean, the point is, we need to be clear about what's going to each, to every, to all of our different categories, and in this case, we mean Bus, and if someone else wants, wants it to be Bus and/or, you know, if they want something else, then I, I don't necessarily, I don't particularly have a problem with them wanting that and getting that, but it's just not the same thing.
Commissioner Orange.
It's a different category.
Janet, maybe for the Commissioner, I would take a higher-level view, I think when we label categories, the reason for adding Other, it's, in each region would be allowed to use it, so if West County wanted to use 100% for theirs for Bus, that's your decision. But if in another jurisdiction, we want to reserve the right, maybe to use it for Bus, but also use it for another list of things, if we try to create another category, it just complicates it. So by saying Bus, means you can use it all for Bus, but by saying Other Non-Rail, it allows the other jurisdictions with the money that we have in that category to use it for Either. Doesn't prevent you from using, or any jurisdiction, from putting it all in one bucket, but we don't want to narrow it down, because then we're going to show that will only apply to that area, it won't apply to anybody else, because nobody else wants only Bus money. So I think high-level, it's, it's an, it's an easier way for us to operate in the future, and it also allows each jurisdiction to move it according to what best fits their regions. So while it may, from, you know, a low-level view, say, well, I'm only gonna use it for Bus, high-level view, for all of the other jurisdictions, says, we might want to use it for Bus and other things. So it just gives the flexibility, doesn't prevent West County from doing exactly Bus only, and that's really the purpose.
Commissioner Romick.
And just very quickly, in our last meeting, one of the biggest complaints is there were too many categories, and the fact that we should add another one and split this up into multiple categories so we can be specific, isn't really what we need to be doing, where we wanted to, to eliminate categories and eliminate options, so I think a broader, as Newell was going at, a broader description of what can be used in the field would be the better approach, rather than be specific with Bus only.
So, so I would suggest that we have two competing goals of the Authority at work. One is, we want to give each region the ability to specify how their portion of the money is used, and the other is, we want to limit the number of categories that the voters have to understand. We've got a situation where those are, in a sense, in conflict, and so what I would suggest for the draft 2.1 that we'll see next week, is that subject to any information we receive from West County, that we break the two out, that we have a Non-Rail Transit Enhancements, or Bus and Other Non-Rail Transit Enhancements for three of the subregions, and Bus Enhancements for West County, with appropriate write-ups.
My only concern with that, Mr. Chair, is, then if you don't, if a region chooses, it's so, it ties our hands, let's just say of that, let me see, $50 million, easy to say, okay, I want 25 in Bus, 25 in Non-Rail Transit, but then you get a project where you only want 10 in Bus, and 40 in Non-Rail Transit. I appreciate that, that one region wants it broken out, but again, it's the flexibility, and I don't want any of us to have zero in Bus, and only, I mean, one, that's my concern.
The other category would be drafted, so it could be either Bus or Other.
So, oh, I'm sorry, you would do Bus, and then another category would be Bus and/or?
Yeah, yeah, so one is, one is Bus only, and one is Bus and Alternatives.
I appreciate the Chair's wanting to mediate and, and resolve this, but I don't, I believe it can stay the same.
If I might respond, what we, I think, in West County think is that it will enable, at a future date, somebody to take our Bus money and use it for other things. What?
It's regional, it's regional money, so.
Well, apparently, the problem is, we can't even say what it is in a way that, we want to make sure it's Bus money. If you wanted to make sure something is something, you call it what it is, not by another name that has multiple meanings potentially, and.
Janet. I.
Well, let's kind of stop the back. The back boy is starting to become less productive, given the power. But he's also most calculated, with your peers.
Well, to be fair, my report is a minority report, I got vastly outvoted by the other people on WIC-TAC, but, but I felt, I, I just, to explain, I felt like WIC-TAC was trying to, to micromanage this too much. I, what I thought was important was to maintain flexibility. This goes a long way out, you know, 20, 25 years from now, there may not even be such thing as a Bus, and, and I wanted to, I wanted to keep maximum flexibility and keep the, keep the categories as broad as possible, like I think I'm hearing here, but I was vastly outvoted. So, I don't think that helps any, but maybe it helps.
So, so again, I guess I would suggest that, I don't know when WIC-TAC is meeting again, but.
We're meeting next Friday, and this is on, the DEP is on the agenda.
Right, so perhaps you could convey the nature of the discussion, and let us know what WIC-TAC recommends, which, which may be no change.
And, and I appreciate that, Mr. Tatson, and I think that's a good idea, but I think we do have some ground rules here, and just because one region wants to name something something, whatever that is, but the other three regions may not want to name it that, I mean, we, we need to be mindful of, of the majority rule. Thank you.
Commissioner Pierce.
Yeah, I, I think, I agree with Tom's point 100%, and I think we solve this by the description that follows this chart in the expenditure plan, that defines this category as Bus and Other Non-Rail Transit, that is up to the discretion of the particular subregion. I mean, that's really clear, these are subregional monies for us to decide how they're going to be used in our subregion, and as long as that description is very clear in the text that follows this chart, I think we'll be fine, and hopefully, WIC-TAC will not want to define that category so tightly that there's no room for change in the future, and they certainly have the discretion of how to use that as they go forward through, through the measure.
Are you wanting me to respond? No, I'm here.
I mean, I think, you know, I, I think, I think you have the obligation to represent what WIC-TAC did this evening, and, and that's fine, and, and you can convey that, right, right, so I think what I'm hearing from the Authority is that we leave it, and, as it is for now, based on Authority majority, and that we look for further comments either on the description or on the naming from WIC-TAC.
All right.
Okay.
Can we invite Jamar to explain the East County's perspective?
Yes.
Following that, I'm a little bit nervous.
You'll be fine.
Good evening, Chair Tatson, Commissioners, my name is Jamar Stamps, Contra Costa County Senior Planner and Staff to Transplan. I prepared a summary statement of Transplan's involvement in the DEP process, and I'll go ahead and go through that now. First, Transplan would like to thank the Contra Costa Transportation Authority, particularly Ross Chittenden and Hesham Nuehme for their hard work in assisting Transplan in developing a draft transportation expenditure plan. Transplan is the East County Subregional Transportation Planning Committee, RTPC, comprised of five-member agencies, Antioch, Brentwood, Oakley, Pittsburgh, and unincorporated Contra Costa County, as well as our partner agencies, BART, Tri Delta Transit, and 501 Contra Costa. A large contingent of the Transplan Committee, as well as many East County residents, were present at the March 9th Authority Board Special Meeting to express East County's transportation needs and priorities. East County representatives delivered a clear and consistent theme, improve the overall efficiency of the transportation network, and in turn, increase the livability and economic viability of East County. More specifically, State Route 239 and James Donlinon Extension are, and will remain, priority capital projects in East County, and will serve the greater Contra Costa and Bay Area regions. These routes of regional significance will improve the county's economic viability, reduce the strain on local, local roads in East County, and improve the environment for non-motorized modes of travel, especially in our rural communities such as Byron, Knightson, and parts of Brentwood and Oakley. Transplan will continue to oppose any loss of local land use control. Transplan cannot support overreaching land use or housing production policies in the growth management program or expenditure plan that would compromise a jurisdiction's ability to receive return-to-source funds. Additionally, Transplan appreciates the Authority providing some flexibility in the proposed measure, particularly with the Regional Choice Fund category, giving the RTPCs the opportunity to boost proposed projects and programs. With this, Transplan proposes to augment the following fund categories. As Hesham mentioned, transportation for seniors and people with disabilities, safe transportation for children and pedestrian bicycle and trail facilities. Lastly, BART has proposed a substantial funding commitment from the county with this proposed measure. Transplan agrees with CCTA in that BART's funding needs require a Bay Area regional approach. Contra Costa County should not be solely responsible for subsidizing BART's costs. Therefore, Transplan recommends the funds from this category be allocated to Regional Choice, where further allocation would be determined by the RTPCs if funding commitments from Alameda and San Francisco Counties are not bet, met by a time certain, set by CTA, CCTA, excuse me. The Transplan Committee and Technical Advisory Committee have discussed the draft DEP at length, and feel that we've proposed a draft DEP that best reflects the priorities of East Contra Costa County. Again, Transplan applauds CCTA's diligent efforts and looks forward to continuing to work with the Authority in developing a transportation expenditure plan that best meets the needs of Contra Costa County. Thank you.
Thank you, and there is a, a letter that you signed in our packet.
Yes.
Are there any questions, Commissioner Orange?
Jamar, thank you for that report, and you were very concise, and you're always welcome, love to see you and appreciate your comments. Did you mean on the BART funding partners, you did not mention MTC, was that just an oversight? Because MTC is the fourth leg of the stool, that they have a lion's share, that if they don't put up a share in the other two, was that the intention that it should have included MTC?
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
And Jamar, I just, maybe I misheard you, I thought you said you wanted to take the money out of a line item for BART and move it into Regional Choice, and I thought even on the line item on BART for our description, that they wouldn't get that money if the other partners weren't there. Did I mishear you? You do want, because I don't see on this chart that it's been moved to Regional Choice.
No, we don't want to move those funds. The only situation, or the only scenario where those funds would be moved is if the other funding partners didn't.
Yes, all right, thank you, I'm sorry, I did misunderstand.
Yeah, that, that's all I was gonna clarify, is it, it, and I, by the way, I'm 100% agreeable with that notion, because if the funds aren't gonna be spent, I, I raised this, I think, two or three meetings ago, if the monies are not going to be spent on BART cars because the other regions have not sort of joined in, then those dollars need to be reallocated, and I think doing it to Regional Choices is as good a place as any.
Who's going to present the report for Transpac?
Well, I, I think, very simply, Hesham already summarized the, the dollar flow, and, and that's relatively accurate. The only other thing I would say is that RTAC got very, very specific in the exact number of Central County projects and what they would be for the major streets and complete street project grants. There's a lot that needs to be done, and, and so that was important, they, I, I'm reading the summary here to make sure I'm remembering everything. The Regional Choice Fund, the, the small amount that we left in there, and, and we're revisiting this again in, not next week, but the week after, and we may refine these dollars a little bit, but the small amount we left in Regional Choice, we wanted to make sure was eligible to include funding of commute alternative programs, van pool, car pool, biking, walking, you know, the, the TDM-type stuff. And so I, I think that was it, I'll, I'll ask both Karen and David, because they were both at the meeting, and that, that's what we did. More to come.
Questions about Transpac's recommendation, okay. Commissioner, Chair Hudson will comment on SWAT's meeting.
Okay, SWAT met on March 14th, we're gonna meet again on March 21st, March 28th, the cookies are getting better and better. With respect to the proposed expenditure plan, starting with line item three, BART capacity access and parking improvements, we pretty much stayed with the language and made two additions, where it says, funds in this category may be used, we added, "To contribute geographical equity share toward the acquisition of new BART cars." Goes on with one and two, if you've seen it, the addition, well, I better read it, it won't make sense. Toward the acquisition of new BART cars and/or advanced train control system that can be shown to increase capacity on BART lines serving Contra Costa, provided that one BART agrees to fund CCTA. Identified improvements from other BART revenues, and two, a regional approach that includes funding commitments from both Alameda and San Francisco Counties must be developed and implemented prior to any funds from this measure being used to fund the acquisition of BART cars, and in addition, absent these documented regional funding commitments, funding in this category may be reallocated to Regional Choice, Subregional Transportation Priorities, funding categories on a sub-region-by-subregion basis as determined by each RTPC. Then on to the ever-lovable number 11, Non-Rail Transit, SWAT supports the language as is, I'll leave that alone. Moving on to Community Development, number 16, SWAT recommended the program description be revised to provide clarity and reaffirm that allocations will be apportioned subregionally, some other stuff, but that's the heart of it. Item 19, Regional Choice Category, SWAT supports the proposed allocation of $3.7 million for SWAT, with the caveat that SWAT has the flexibility over the course of the life of the new measure to disperse among the subregion. With respect to policy-related items, SWAT submits the following comments. One, urban limit line. One, urban limit line. SWAT supports the current voter-approved ULL as part of a new measure and inclusion of voter-approved ULL continue as part of a new transportation expenditure plan growth management program. Significant discussion has taken place with the issue of whether or not the current 30-acre exemption should be eliminated. SWAT supports CCTA-proposed language that one adjustment per five years be added. SWAT intends to provide additional comments as discussion on the subject matter continues. Second, the citizen oversight committee. SWAT recommends a CAC committee as part of a new measure with the following recommendations: one representative from each city appointed by the local agency, four at-large representatives from each subregion, that would be, I believe, one from each of the four regions, total of four, and two at-large representatives appointed by CCTA. That would be a total of 25 members. In addition, the roles and responsibilities of a revamped CAC need to be clearly defined, and I think that's big enough. If I go any further, I'm going to lose some people.
All right, thank you. I don't quite remember the CAC recommendation, but maybe I was tuning out at that point of the meeting.
You were. We were.
Okay.
But I can read it.
Is there any questions about SWAT's proposal? Commissioner Mitrovic?
Well, it's not really a question. I just want to clarify, they have Community Development Investment Grant Program, and it was a question I was just going to ask a staff. That line now says Community Development Incentive Transportation Grant Program, and I don't know where that language came from, because it wasn't mentioned in any of the RTPCs, and I would prefer to keep it as Community Development Investment Grant Program as opposed to incentive transportation. I don't want to -- again, we're talking flexibility here, and I love the language that SWAT is proposing, but I don't know where that incentive transportation term came from.
Maybe I can clarify, and I think we'll change the name as we continue discussions, but the comment we got from SWAT was, we want to make sure people understand this is for transportation purposes rather than housing or any other -- you're doing transportation infrastructure purposes.
Well, but their statement says that it's about job growth and economic development.
To incentivize that, but the dollars from Measure J, from the new measure, can be only used for transportation-related improvements.
So it's transportation improvements that result in new housing or jobs?
Okay, well, we just need to make that clear.
That's fine. Thank you for that.
Is there anything wrong with the term investment grant program as opposed to incentivize transportation?
Nothing wrong with it.
I would really like to go back to investment grant program. Because I don't want people assuming that it's only for transportation. It may be -- it probably will be, but again, we keep talking flexibility, and I think that ties our hands. And then I guess we're going to talk the ULL later on, so I won't make my comments here on that, which you probably already know what they are.
Commissioner Murray.
I want to speak, but Ross wants to make a comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on that discussion there. I certainly appreciate the fact we're discussing it, and words do matter. Fact is that when some of the documents went out, they were inconsistent between incentive and investment, and this is clearly going to be one of the items that are going to be continued for a while. I know that a number of our stakeholder groups have been meeting offline, and I believe we're probably going to get some kind of recommendation towards this item next week. So I think on this one, my recommendation for us would be that we hold tight a little bit and see what they come back with, and then we can decide here, do we want to wrestle with it at the board here? I know that there was a meeting with a group of our stakeholders and some of the city managers that was productive, and we can decide if we want to get them together again or not, but regardless of what we call it, I think we want to be a little, maintain a little flexibility on where.
Well, why don't we maintain flexibility then by just calling a community development grant program, and then when the, whatever the language is that comes forward, we can have that conversation and decision then.
I second that.
Some feedback, which is good. Is there any -- oh, Commissioner Murray.
Yes. I asked Ross to go before me because he wanted me to shut my mic off. So the language that was suggested by SWAT is different than what's in the new TEP. Are we going to discuss that later, or do you want me to make my comments now on it?
You can make your comment now.
Okay, we're, we are comfortable with the language that's in the new TEP that we're going to see tonight, which is different. It doesn't, there are some words in the SWAT one that are confusing to me, like how we're going to do geographical equitable shares of BART cars. I mean, are we going to give half to one? I just don't know how that's going to work. So that's a question that I would have on that, and it's not in the, it's not in the new draft language that's before us. And the word "must be developed and implemented" from the regional approach has been changed to "agreed to," which is, makes more sense, because it's very doubtful we can implement everything. You know, it takes time. This is a long measure, and we can't take, we can't implement everything right away, and that would mean that we couldn't order any cars until all this was implemented. So "agreed to," I think, is a much better wording. And then I wanted to point out to you that Director Keller and I are thinking, bringing to the board, a strengthening of the idea that each of the counties have to put in money for the cars, and so I wanted to read this to you and see if you had any reactions. We haven't brought it to the board.
So that part, I think you could work, wait for the tab.
Well, it just fits right into here now. Then I can be quiet later. Funding in the following categories of the BART bond renewal program for projects on or near BART stations will only be considered in the counties that fully participate in the BART rail acquisition program pursuant to the board resolution adopted in January. So that we wouldn't, we wouldn't allow San Francisco, for example, to have money from our bond fund if they weren't agreeing to and putting forward the money for the cars. That's what we're proposing to kind of strengthen it. We wouldn't fix our stations, maybe. Of course we would, because all our people go there too, but there would be things that they might want that we wouldn't put forward until they came up with the money. That's what we're planning to propose to the board.
All right. So if you could transmit that language to staff, that'd be helpful.
Okay.
So is there any other comments on any of the RTP submissions before I take public comment on this item? So I have no speaker slips. Is there any member of the public who'd like to speak on this item? Mr. Campbell? So I had you down as 1.4 and 1.2.3. Well, you can, the whole tab comes up at 1.2.3, the revision 2.0. So hang on. All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak on this item? Hisham?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure I didn't misspeak earlier. The changes you see here are not reflected in version 2.0. They will be in version 2.1.
Very good, thank you. So let's now move on to --
Clarify, with the changes that we've talked about here, not as it was written on here, right? Because we have the two changes, I just want to make sure we're clear. Okay.
So let's move on.
I was going to just follow on that, if you don't mind. I was taking some notes here, because I wanted to do exactly what Commissioner Grant is saying is make the changes that we agreed to, so if you don't mind, I can read them to you.
Okay.
We can do that. So first, just for the record, I can't remember if we just stated that we do have a number of letters in our handout packet, a March 25th letter from Transplan, a March 24th letter from Transpac, and a March 16th letter for SWAT. Just, that was a handout in your DS. So what I had is that we would update the allocation table for all the RTBC recommendations. Other action items, we'll continue to track with WIC-TAC on the BART and other. We will add the word "other non-rail transit enhancements," work on the BART language, both with the suggestion from Director Murray and the language about regional choice if we can't find a solution for BART. There were some discussions about major streets, complete streets. That is an agenda item, so I'm not going to take any actions on that yet. If we want to do that, it'd be later. We'll try to address the comments about making sure commute alternatives is an eligible expense, community development program, and we'll continue to work on that. Rename regional choice to something like subregional needs or similar, and the Citizen Advisory Committee is on the agenda, and that's what I had.
One correction, just to make -- you said BART and other non-rail. You meant bus and other non-rail, but other than that, that's correct.
Yes.
I know.
All right. So that then brings us to item 1.2.1, which is options for modifying the principles of agreement to establish an urban limit line and attachment A. So just to keep track of all of the documents you have in front of you, there was the original authority meeting handout. In addition, late Monday, there is another item that was posted to the website that's in your handouts that was an update to what, essentially what's attachment A in the current Measure J growth management program. And then probably late this afternoon, there was yet another handout that made some corrections to the Monday handout where some of the references weren't clear. It's the most current, except you have to incorporate it with the corrections.
And Chair, so at the bottom, the attachment C, and at the bottom, it actually says revised attachment C in the footer. So that's the one that, no, you have the right.
Excuse me. Beginning to have concern. I didn't get any documents at all before the meeting, and I had, I didn't even know that there was a meeting, and I was trying to figure it out, and I looked, and somehow it wasn't directed to my account, probably went into the spam folder. And I'm a little, what I'm concerned about is that we would be voting on something critical, but I haven't had an opportunity to look at anything. Is that true or not true? That's one of my questions.
Well, I think voting is too strong a term for tonight's action. I think we're going to give some discussion and maybe some direction for any revisions and feedback.
It's pretty hard to even follow which document where, because.
So what I would suggest.
It's really a mess, is the best.
So as Ross said, if you could look at revised attachment C in your handouts, that would be what a fair amount of the discussion would be about.
I've got a whole bunch of papers. Now, how would I, okay, maybe Karen's going to find it. I have multiple packets. Okay. So my concern, though, is that we would be voting on something without anything that comes out an hour or two before the meeting.
And I share that concern, as I said, we're going to provide, we're going to listen to the presentation, we're going to ask questions, we're going to take public feedback. We will have some discussion, and we will provide direction. We're not going to, this is not the, yeah, feedback, this is not sort of the vote on what's going to be in a new measure urban limit line proposal.
So we're mostly just doing input right now?
Right. You're going to receive input and provide input.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Beck?
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. The Chair, last meeting did a masterful job of summarizing, and I'll just briefly summarize what's in your packet tonight. There's a, attachment A is a discussion of potential changes. There, right now, ULL is a required part of the growth management program. Jurisdictions have two options. One, they adopt the county's ULL, or they adopt their own ULL. So far, there are three jurisdictions that have adopted their own ULL: Antioch, Pittsburgh, and San Ramon. As you'll note in the table on pages two and three of attachment A, there are a number of different approaches that jurisdictions have taken to implement their ULL. The county has its own, it has Measure L findings that are required to make any change of up to 30 acres. There are certain clarifications that were made by the prior executive director in conversation with Dennis Berry, who was the county planning director at the time. And there's, the county also has a supermajority requirement to make any 30-acre change. The table goes through and notes which jurisdictions have the Measure L findings required, which have incorporated the authority clarifications, basically. It's Brentwood and Oakley who have, and which have a supermajority required, and that's basically just the county in San Ramon. The memo goes through a number of reasons why one might want to change the UL requirement and reasons why one might not want to change them. There are basically three options. One is to make no changes. The other is to eliminate the 30-acre adjustment provision, which has been suggested by some advocates. And the other is to make a number of modifications for consistency. As I noted in the table, there are a lot of different approaches the jurisdictions have taken, and to clarify some of the requirements. Some of those clarifications are in the attachment, the modified ULL requirement that's in your attachment C this evening. There are also potential changes on frequency and magnitude, the changes that might be required, how often a jurisdiction could make a, up to 30-acre adjustment, and how many they could make. And there's also an issue on mitigation. Could there be mitigation standards incorporated into measure, the new measure, excuse me, not Measure J, into the new measure, such as protecting a certain amount of land outside permanently as a mitigation for the change to the ULL? Other provisions to help ensure that minor changes facilitate establishment of a permanent edge for, of urban development. There's also a phase-in elimination of the 30-acre, so that it takes place over time. And finally, there's a potential to limit the exemption for certain kinds of uses and not others. The changes that are in attachment C are, as I mentioned, primarily clarifications, trying to make sure that the proposed language is clear on what can and can't, or would or not, not be allowed under the new ULL provisions. And that ends my report.
B contains some background information, for example, the county code related to the urban limit line, potential clarifications on the 30-acre adjustment, and as an example, Oakley's resolution regarding those clarifications. If you turn to attachment C, which is in tonight's handout, and look at the revised attachment C, what that attempts to do is take the Measure J language and update it with the idea, with the focus on achieving clarity and consistency, which is the recommended portions of the last meeting. And so particularly, if you start on page, the second page of attachment C, you'll see some notes, and the strikeouts reflect, I suspect, changes from the version that was put on the website on Monday, as opposed to the Monday version from the current Measure J language. And those changes are simply so that references go to the right section, because in the first draft, it was just numbered differently. Anyway, so what this does is it, if you go to the revisions to the ULL for the 30-acre provision on the third page, it says that, you know, any jurisdiction can change its urban limit line through voter approval at any time. It says that if there's a countywide vote on the ULL, then a jurisdiction can, and then the jurisdiction is relied on the county. It can either update its reliance following the old procedure, or it can leave its urban limit line where it used to be. So it's not required to follow the county, even though it originally adopted the county line, or it could adopt its own. And then if you want to enact a minor adjustment, if you look on 3A through E, it would say that each acre, each adjustment of 30 acres may include one or several parts. So particularly thinking about the county, if you want to. include one or several parts. So particularly thinking about the county, if you want to adjust five acres in one area, and 10 acres in another area, and 12 acres in another area, you could do all of that as part of one adjustment, as opposed to having to say it's three adjustments.
It's the same 30 acre.
Right, because you're still under 30 acres. As long as the total of the parts is under 30 acres, right, that you, every jurisdiction would have to make at least one of the findings that the county currently has to make, that were in the original, in the other document, that consistent with what others have said, the adjustment is not contiguous to another minor adjustment unless, or once the sum of the minor adjustments in a contiguous area gets above 30 acres. So what that means is, take the prior example. You make a seven-acre adjustment and one 30-acre adjustment. You come back some years later, or some months later, whatever the timing is, and you say, oh, I now want to add three more acres to that. You can do that under this right way it's written, but the consecutive contiguous adjustments can't ever get to more than 30 without voter approval.
Correct.
That you're not creating a pocket of land outside the urban limit line, so essentially no islands, and that the adjustments are relatively isolated and well separated from prior adjustments, which is consistent with what Oakley and Brentwood have adopted and what the authority interpreted the ten of Measure J to be in 2007. And there's always the out for state and federal law and unconstitutional takings, which are a separate category. And then, as the side note says, there's been some suggestions, if you look at the other categories of adjustments you might make, that, you know, one way to try and come up with a compromise that no one will love, but maybe everyone can live with, is that we in some way limit the number of adjustments a jurisdiction may make per period of time. So what SWAT did was not quite what was in the report. SWAT said, one of those for every city in town for five years, and two of those for every five years for the county, recognizing the county faces a different situation. So comments. Commissioner Arnerich, and then Commissioner Mitchel.
Yeah, just wanted to go back to a question to staff. Brad, on the handout we got tonight, under, where it says Attachment A, Urban Limit Line, ULL Compliance Requirements, under definition of line number four, there was a new sentence that was added, and it almost reads like Item C above. It doesn't make sense. It just says local voter ULL. In the last sentence, it says, "The legislative body of local jurisdiction has adopted..." It's like it's missing the verb, the action, the... Is that supposed to be there?
Let me attempt to, and this is Bill Gray, Gray Bowen Scott. I'm the one that actually made these edits, because what I realized when we put the draft together, that the references were wrong. In other words, you know, because we renumbered the paragraphs, and so in the, in the version that's in your packet, the references are just wrong. This is intended to say the exact same thing. It's just because it...
Same thing as what?
On, on number four, that's, that new sentence.
I know, but it doesn't make sense. It doesn't read as, it has to be an action. It's not past tense. It'd have to say, "The legislative body of a local jurisdiction must adopt conditions under," something like that. It can't say "has."
Okay.
You're reading, you're reading knowledge that you have. If you just read it, it does not make sense. And it's almost the same sentence you have up in 3C.
Okay, so we can...
So, yeah.
Okay, we'll fix, yeah.
But what I'm after is, what are you asking? That, I don't understand. I'm worried that there's something there that I can't figure out.
So, right.
So if we can't...
So, so the, what it's saying is that...
Is your mic not on?
Sorry, I have a mic. It's too many other things.
What it's saying is that in order to have an acceptable urban limit line, one of the things you have to do is to agree that if you're going to make it under 30-acre exemption, you agree to the provisions of Section 3 under revisions to the ULL, which is on the next page.
Right. Then it needs to be written that way. I think that's what the intention. It doesn't say that. Okay.
Commissioner Butt.
You know, I don't live in a part of the county where people worry about an urban limit line. But I, I think that, that the, you know, the landscape has changed dramatically since urban limit lines were first adopted. And the need for an urban limit line, you know, is much more important today than it was five or 10 years ago even. And so, you know, I would support something that, that limits, that puts some kind of limitation on, on how often adjustment can be made. You know, if you do the quick math, you say, okay, if, for example, you know, 19 cities, 30 acres, so the maximum, if every city did a 30-acre expansion, you know, you're talking about 600 acres, which is not a big deal. But if every city does this every year, you know, you're talking about half the county. And I think that, I think it would, I, I support the idea of putting some kind of limitation on it. I think that, I think that providing some flexibility is a good thing, but I think you ought to, this ought to be drafted so that a city, you know, has like maybe one bite at the apple. And, you know, they needed to decide whether it's something they really need to do right now, or whether they want to save it for later. So I support the concept.
Commissioner Mitchel.
Thank you, and I appreciate, Bill, that you've tried to work through this. I do have some concerns. Okay, 3E, and I get that except for the allowance. I'm not sure that there's a need for E, because relatively isolated and well separated are not defined. And if it's just nice language, you know, I, I don't get it. I think 3C takes care of the concern. So I, my comment is that we don't need E. Relative to the issue of how many can be done in a five-year period, Member Pierce and I had a conversation yesterday. Limiting the county to two in five years, we don't know what's going to happen. And we're so much larger, it's, you know, I, I think my board, and unfortunately Supervisor Glover had to step out, we may consider three, but we would still consider two. Too restrictive. As an example, and Commissioner Butt is correct, he lives in Far West County, but there are unincorporated areas in West County that the county may want to look at that, and yet then over in Far East County. They, they really, the twixt and tween don't meet. And to say that there can only be those two, and yet there's something in South County that makes sense, I just, you know, I'll acquiesce on three. You know how I have felt about this whole thing, that it doesn't need to be changed at all. But two is too restrictive for the county, and I do not believe our Board of Supervisors would support two. Three in five years, you know, let's all, we know what the planning process is and CEQA and all of that. But I'll leave the cities to make the decision for themselves on how they want to handle it. But as far as the county is concerned, no less than three. And again, I, I don't see the need for E.
Thank you. And E came simply from the letter from the authority back in 2007 to Dennis Berry. So, okay, Commissioner Hudson?
Yeah, I, I think it's important that the county do whatever you got to do to come up with a number, because we're getting down to crunch time. To me, I look at it as this is a number you can do without going to a vote of the people, and, and that's really what we've been, no, you got to go to a vote of the people on everything. I have to sit back and chuckle. I wish I had the opportunity. I can't do 30. I mean, I, I get 25 if I get a four-fifth vote of the Planning Commission and the City Council, and there's no appeal. I mean, it's like, guys, we have, the problem is, if we don't settle on something like this, we haven't had the problem up to this point. I'm worried about, as I pointed out, five, 10 years from now, when you get problems like people buying a golf course for twice its worth and wanting to convert it to housing. Not that I'm saying anything that Eric Zell's walked in, but there's, there's some real concerns out there that the landscape, no pun intended, is changing.
Are you arguing for more flexibility?
I'm arguing that the county come up with their number and let us know what it is, because I think just roughly, I'm starting to hear some stuff that some of the rest of us could buy into this. So get in a, get a formal number.
What I'd like to do now is, I think we've asked questions. I'd like to get, take public comment, and then we'll come back to Commissioner's discussion. So, or at this point, I don't have any speaker slips. Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Hey, it's going to be calm.
Okay.
Okay, now Commissioner Arnerich, and then Commissioner Durant.
Well, I think, of course, persons I want to direct it to are having a side conversation. We can, I, I actually just wanted to respond.
Yeah, she was catching him up.
I think the proposal here was to do two in five years. You know, Supervisor Mitchel office said, you know what? They could live with three. So that's a proposal I heard. And federal, are you, do you agree with that?
Okay, what they're suggesting and recommending federal is, in the whole discussion on urban limit lines, if, if the county, well, cities have something, but within a five-year period...
For one, one percent.
It's been recommended that the county be limited to only two ability, the ability twice to bring, to change that urban limit line without a vote for those 30 acres or less. And I gave the example of the diversity of the geography of our county, that that would feel too restrictive, especially if one was in Far West County and one was in Far East County. They don't really, they don't impact each other. And then maybe somebody in South County wanted to do it, we would be restricted until the end of that five-year period. And so I am recommending that I believe county Board of Supervisors could live with three in five years as a compromise.
I could be dumb on this, but I don't understand, do what?
Oh.
To go, to expand the urban limit line by those 30 acres or less, without, you know, without going to a vote. Any, retain the 30 acres or less without a vote with all the other criteria that you need. But the conversation is, how can we limit the number that can be done within a five-year period? And we want to be reasonable, and two is too restrictive, but three is doable. And because a fourth one, you know, we can wait another, until the first day of the next five-year cycle, as however it starts. And so that's what I was willing to, to recommend to our colleagues here.
So I appreciate, so I was going to make my comment and the question, that what I heard was that proposal, and that the authority staff and some of our partners suggested two 30-acre exceptions within three years. You're suggesting three.
And, and if I could just clarify, the authority staff hasn't recommended anything other than we consider it. SWAT, at our meeting on Monday, proposed that we would accept, recognizing that none of us could speak for our jurisdictions, particularly, you know, our supervisor, that we would accept for the cities, one for five years, and that we would propose for the county, two. But blame, blame SWAT for what's on the table. Yeah, there's a discussion on it, right. Just clarify.
I'm trying to get to that. Okay. That's, we all know that. I'm just going to respond to what your suggestion was. I think cities should agree to that with a caveat. And the caveat is that you could do three within that five-year period, provided that the local city that's most directly affected does not object. And that's, that's really the issue, that 30-acre exceptions, if a city, the county says, I want this, and because we've all, most of us in areas have had that before your times.
Oh, no, I've been around 30 years dealing with this.
We had to litigate over those.
I know.
And they, they turned out to be horrible projects, that were suffering through traffic problems, no mitigation, all the taxes went to the county, the cities are stuck trying to figure out how to make this. So to put some teeth to it, it's a small compromise, which would say, provided that a city, because guess what? You're going to be sued over it. And it also portends, if you don't agree to that, it also seems like, then there's an agenda there. Because first of all, you haven't done that many in the entire time we've had a ULL, collectively, much less in five years. So if we want to be honest, and I appreciate that compromise reaching, I would just say, if a city, if it's a 30-acre next to my city, and we say no, I don't think you ought to be doing it.
And I appreciate that, Neil, but that isn't in the current, and that's never been discussed before. And you're making that a condition on the county and not the cities. And I think we've developed good relationships over these last 30 years, since those incorporations and those developments, that I think that's unfair to put that on the county, that we have to get the permission of a city.
So if I could ask, maybe ask Commissioner Durant to make his comment.
Let me just finish. I'm trying to get to this. So my point is, is, let's be clear. These aren't changes we're asking the county to make. These aren't changes we're asking. This is return-to-source restriction. So the county, you can go ahead and do whatever you want. You can do one every year, anytime you can do it. But the rules we're talking about are restrictions on our return-to-source monies.
Well, I misunderstood them, because I thought it was on what defined whether there's a vote on the ULL and the 30 acres.
But it really ties back. Let's just be clear. We're talking about, like, we're trying to force the county. Nobody's trying to force the county. But this is return-to-source money. That's all it is.
Yeah, which is true.
Okay.
And it is currently, by the way. That's how it...
Well, it's tied to the return-to-source matter.
But we don't have to ask the city for permission.
No. And I don't think we should ask the city for permission.
And federal and I are just two people. You're not going to get the support of the Board of Supervisors for that, to ask a city's permission.
Just a, just an offer.
I know, and I appreciate that. But I think the fact that we're willing to limit it to three in five years, rather than being able to do however many we want in the next frame.
Yeah, and the only reason that I would go along with the three is because of the fact that if we look at what has taken place over the last decade, that there hasn't been a lot of movement with anyone looking for the exception. So, so I guess that, that would be a test case.
Okay, Commissioner Durant.
Thank you. I think I'm going to make a suggestion for a, a minor alteration in the language we talked about, that I think will speak to the concerns that have been raised about the potential for sort of, i- if you will, a notion of excessive ULL changes. So I like the idea of three for the county, and I'm only going to talk about the county now, not the cities for this. I think the one suggestion that I would make is that we say, subject to the notion that no more than one of those be in any particular RPC, RTPC area in that, in that five-year period. That gives some certainty to folks that it's really only once in a, in a, in a region during a five-year period.
Right, one per subregion, but limited to three.
But limited to three. Yeah, that's right. Yeah.
So could I just complicate that a little bit?
You can't define subregion, you know, that per five years.
Well, yeah, if, if I could just complicate Commissioner Durant's comment a little bit, because in Item A, it says that each 30 acres could be one or several parts.
Yes.
So a given adjustment could actually have one in each subregion, you know, each of 10 acres each, and that's permitted. So do you really mean that over the five-year period, there can be no more than 30 acres of adjustments in any subregion?
Yes.
Or do you mean that there can only be one adjustment in any subregion?
I think you're saying one per subregion.
It's, it's, it's one per subregion.
Of, of, of any size.
Of, of, up to 30.
Well, all I'm saying is, is there's a little more flexibility by having, being able to break each adjustment into multiple parts?
I'm thinking more total.
I think you're making it, I think you're making it harder, actually.
No, I'm, I'm actually, okay, so it may be that I'm misunderstanding what SWAT's proposal was, because I thought SWAT came up with the proposal of, of one per city, two for the county.
I understand that, but I'm looking at three, I'm looking at a three in its entirety. And so if you look...
Well, so let's look at two in its entirety first, so I understand SWAT's proposal, because that's what we're talking about adjusting, right? So what was the two proposed by SWAT?
So you're, we're talking about different topics. So let's back up. So my understanding of your topic was that it'd be three adjustments for the county for five years, with only one in each subregion. And all I'm asking you to do is look at Item 3.0A on the revised handout. And what that says is that any given adjustment can't be more than 30 acres, but it could have more than one part of it. So...
I don't agree with you, Don. I think the county can live with, where there's four regions, that we would only do one 30-acre in, per region, with a limit of three, even though there's four subregions in any five-year, or in a five-year period, and then another, that wouldn't be a rolling five-year.
Okay.
I think we can sell that to our borders, our colleagues.
I mean, we can try. I think it's more restrictive on the county, but...
It is more restrictive on the county. I agree, but that's, we're trying to show our good faith that we're willing to, to agree to that. I agree, Don. I, I hadn't thought of it, but...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's fine. All right. So there's no public... So there's no public comment, I'm sure there will be at a later date, but it sounds like we have suggestion for staff as how to bring this back to us in the next version.
After you hit the light, you're up. Now you're up.
Okay, number one, let's, let's see, this is extremely important for Brentwood, or for, I'll say, East County. So I gotta get it right. I really do, and compromising is fine, but I gotta make sure compromising fits our compromise. We've never, at this point, we've never broken from the county, we've followed through with what do we have, but Brentwood has changed. We're sending 57,000 people, where build-outs around 85,000, they're coming to our area. Bart hopefully comes in the next 15, 20, 30, 40 years, and, and we're gonna be able to take care of them. Oakley's involved in this also, because we're on the same agreement, and I'm not quite sure where Oakley is. Right at this moment, status quo is where we're at, because we've never busted this thing. I don't know what Kevin has to say about it, but.
Speaking of Mike.
The idea of one every five years for the cities, that works, that works for me.
If I could, this is a county-wide urban limit line vote that was taken, this isn't individual or region, but you have the option. If your city wants to draw its own line and take it to your voters, you have the option of doing that. As, as Pittsburgh and Antioch did. Well, I know you know that, because it's, and San Ramon. So, so you have that option. But this is, this was a vote of, of the people of the county.
Well, I definitely want to keep the 30 acres. I definitely am, I, we, we've signed on with that, and I guess, you're saying, I just want to make sure, can you tell me what you're saying? Kevin?
One 30-acre adjustment every five years.
Per city.
Per city.
I think Brentwood, I don't think I'd get crucified with that.
Commissioner, about.
I want to be able to sell my rights, so for instance, I don't, I don't need them, so I want to set this up like Cap'n Trail, so I want to sell Bob my rights, I want, I want there to be a fair market here, okay? That's my suggestion.
Well, you might get support from some of our EPAC members if you agree to put the money into a mitigation fund. Okay, Commissioner Abelson.
I just want to put it into buses. I couldn't resist that, I'm sorry. But in our area, I, I don't think we want, I, I think we're quite happy with the urban limit line in our area, and I actually do think this goes back to the, the bus topic we were talking about earlier, that we're not all the same, and either we can each be different in some way, or we can't, but we can't say, in one area, you can't be different, but in another area, you can. So I think we need to, at some point, address that issue on a, I guess what I would call a more general level, but in our, I don't see in our area that we, we don't have any interest in.
That's perfect.
Yeah, I mean, we have to.
All right, so Commissioner Glover and then Commissioner Durant.
Just like every other region of the county, we have to sell this to our voters.
Well, I, I think we, we may need some opinions on this, because I don't know that CCTA has the authority to, to do that restriction. We're only responsible for the return-to-source portion of it. I think this needs to go back before the Board of Supervisors, and for them to make that recommendation, if it's to come before this body and you accept it.
Well, if I could finish, I was nothing to say.
Well, I'm just trying to do some clarity, because I, I don't think that this body.
But you interrupted what I was saying, that was gonna.
Well, go ahead and make your point.
So my point is that. Sorry. My point is, on the urban limit line, that this, there was an arrangement whereby we all had to get a vote on it somewhere. Either we could use the county's urban limit line, and the city would agree to it, or we could do our own. That was the original agreement, which is in effect now, right? Okay, so, pardon?
And in the proposal.
So if the proposal is accepted by the voters, ultimately, it has to be the voters ultimately accepting this, then that would undo, what, would that undo all of the prior agreements on the urban limit line, or the ones that was done through the county?
None, none of it.
None of that.
None of it. So what is this, I don't understand what all this all means then.
This is for, the biggest change here is to have consistency in what a jurisdiction has to do to make a future 30-acre or less adjustment to its urban limit line, and stay in compliance with Measure J to receive return-to-source money.
So you can already, I thought, do that, but this idea, instead of it being 30, I thought, we now have 30 acres per measure?
No, you have, no, no, right, you can make, under the current ruling, and we've checked with authority staff, and we've checked with county planning staff, each, each jurisdiction, except for those that have adopted their own urban limit line, can make an unlimited number of 30-acre adjustments, assuming they meet certain criteria.
Non-contiguous?
What?
Non-contiguous.
Some of the jurisdictions, the findings are unclear about that.
So if this is passed by the voters, okay, which means it has to go through a bunch of hoops first, okay, then it is whatever this says, and all of those others are void for the county.
The, the urban limit lines stay in place, but the conditions for amending them, for both Measure J and the new measure, would now be these features.
Okay, that's what I was saying.
Well, actually, that's not quite true. You can't change Measure J.
Well, no, actually.
You cannot change Measure J. You can't do that, sorry. Get the attorneys in the room. You can't go back and change Measure J, it's voted on, unless you go back and put specific language in this that says, we were going to go back and do, and it doesn't do that, it just changes language. This only applies to Measure X.
Well, let's consult with the attorneys. Commissioner Glover.
Okay, that was what I was wanting to.
Okay, again, all I'm saying is that this would have to go through the Board of Supervisors, because any amendments made of 30 acres or less would have to be on a four-fifth vote of the Board of Supervisors, not, but not by city.
Yeah. Right. Commissioner Durant.
Thank you. Here's my suggestion, I, it's since, it, it seems to me that part of what we're trying to do tonight is give direction to staff.
Right.
I, I'd like to get a sense that we have concurrence on the base notion, that it felt to me like we had an agreement on it, and it, it sort of feels like we're trying to snatch defeat from the jaws of victory here. So what I thought I heard, some concurrence on, I'd like to hear from everybody else, is, we're, we're fine with the, the language that was in the handout from tonight, with the clarification or adjustment, it's one per city, per five years, for the county, it's three per, for the county within a five-year period, but no more than one per sub-region. And then the elimination of, of condition E, is, do we have sort of a concurrence around that? If so, in the interest of time and movement, I would say, let's consider that direction and move on.
I sense that there is.
Okay, great, thank you.
I was gonna suggest something similar, because I think part of the confusion, if you look at the attachment C, it's written kind of forward tense, we've already heard some of that, all the jurisdictions have a urban limit line today, we can reflect that, and then, and we're not trying to change that, it's just, again, this is only with respect to return-to-source. If a jurisdiction wants to do any other change to urban limit line, then we'll have to make a finding of whether that's consistent or not.
And it has to be in the measure, right, because that's what we're gonna put in front of the voters for the new measure.
And this applies, this is really important, this applies to the new measure, this is not, it's not retroactive to Measure J.
Well, that's, that's actually, will be a policy decision.
But that's, we need, we need to stop, we need to get a legal opinion from somebody who's not involved with CCTA, because I personally do not believe, on a voter-approved, you cannot go back unless we're, we can't, we have funding commitments, we have bond commitments, we have revenue streams that are all interlinked based on a contract, and the contract is, the voters gave us a contract, we have sold that, and to go back and say, I'm gonna unilaterally change this, just because I put some, some goosey language in there, you can't undo those contracts. I don't believe that you can do that. I think it's wrong, it's your time. It'd be like trying to redo Measure C.
Is, is the question that we're asking, right, because we're, we're actually talking about two different buckets of money, right?
Right.
I don't think we're talking about changing anything with respect to eligibility for Measure J funds, I think we're only talking about eligibility for Measure X funds, let's call it.
That's what I'd say.
Well, okay, that, so, so I'm just, I'm just. Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm saying, given that we're doing a new measure for a new funding mechanism for 2.34 or 2. whatever million, billion dollars, this only applies to the new measures' dollars, the existing Measure J dollars are allocated per Measure J.
But I think we need to figure out how to blend the two.
I was gonna say, what Ross said was that this is a policy, is a policy decision, so what I'm suggesting is a policy decision is, Measure J is Measure J, those funds have already been allocated and identified and all that, we're not trying to change Measure J, we're trying to do a new measure with a new pocket of funds, and we're saying, these restrictions would apply to the new pocket of funds. That's my suggestion, because I think that's logical.
And there's nothing out there in the pipeline that people are gonna get through before this, should this measure pass, when it's implemented, that all of a sudden, that we would do whatever to circumvent the intent.
I think we just, yeah, seriously, leaving Measure J alone.
Yes. Well, Commissioner Worth. Okay, all right, so why don't we then.
I gotta get one more stat here.
Yes, okay.
Measure J was voted on by the people, that's the law of the people at this time. What you're talking about changing is how the return-to-source will be restricted if the policy that are set around Measure J, around the urban limit line, are not met.
The new measure.
The new measure.
Okay, for new dollars.
Only subject to the return-to-source dollars.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Taylor.
You got me wound up. I guess what I'm trying to figure out, so Ross, the return to source would be the same with Measure J. So, so how do we change that?
Well, that, again, it's.
Data uncertain?
We could, Mal and I have been chatting, legally, we could find a way if we decided to, to amend the requirements, the growth management requirements for Measure J, that's, but we don't have to, so that is a decision and discussion that we have to have. So what we're.
So what I was suggesting, we bring that back, because that'll affect both this and the checklist itself, because if you say that you can't amend requirements for a 30-acre amendment, because it's inappropriate, given the contract with the voters, then it's hard to say, but you can amend the checklist for Measure J.
Well, can you apply for money from both pots? Let's assume this new measure passes, some jurisdiction wants return-to-source, and it's gonna cost X, but I want some money from Measure J and some money from this, because if they aren't gonna take from the same pots, there's not a conflict, I don't think. And I don't know of anybody that's got anything in the pipeline under Measure J right now.
So Commissioner Pierce.
I guess, I'm, I wasn't gonna say anything, but I have to. It seems to me, and I'm certainly not a lawyer, but there is a certain amount of common sense, I think, in the concept that once the voters approve what's in this measure, whatever we put in the measure, passes. So is it not possible to put into this measure a requirement that would amend Measure J to make its requirements for return-to-source under the urban limit line consistent with what we are choosing to do now? Because what we are doing now makes it tighter, not looser. So if we are intending to meet some of the concerns expressed by some of our advocates, that we tighten down the parameters surrounding 30-acre adjustments, it seems to me we ought to be able to write into this measure something that says, this thereby amends Measure J, and it's passed by a vote of the people, knowing that they are then amending Measure J to be consistent with the new measure. It seems like we ought to be able to do that, but, but that's up, that's up, yeah, then you have a contract with the voters, they knowingly are making that change, and I would leave it to the attorneys to figure out how to do that.
Commissioner Worth and then Commissioner Arnrich.
Yeah, Commissioner Pierce said it exactly the way I said, I think you have to amend, in the new measure, we have to amend, the voters affirmatively amend the existing law. And I believe that that's what we did with Measure C. When we, when we voted on Measure J, it included provisions in the language that specifically said, these rules in Measure J supersede the measure, rules in Measure C. So I, I think the key is, you have to get voter concurrence, that that's what the intent is, because, yeah.
Because we added a ULL to Measure J.
So Commissioner Arnrich.
Let's say you could find a workaround, I, I think which, and I get, there are some people who want to do this, this is not what our PMA, this is not what the cities have been talking about, this has kind of leaked out here pretty recent, that we were talking about going back and redoing Measure J. Let's be honest, I'm pretty engaged, this, I've only heard this second-hand, this has never come up here, it's never been in writing, and it's not in writing in these documents, that it's going back to redo Measure J. So that's a little bit disingenuous on collectiveness here. That's not appropriate. We, we made the changes in the way we did it, because it was a forward motion, we were ending one and starting a new one. These are parallel. This isn't the same, these aren't the same circumstance. While all of us, most of us sitting here have an environmental background, would like to changes, I think, just personally, I don't see the cities, maybe there's two sitting at the table, I don't see anybody else supporting this, and if we polled the other 17 cities, I don't think you're gonna find support to go back and redo return-to-source monies in Measure J. And if we're going to, then agendize that, that that is the agenda. We are proposing to go back and redo the return-to-source requirements in Measure J and have a standalone discussion.
So can I suggest that we do that, and that we ask staff to prepare a legal analysis that indicates whether we have the ability to do so or not, and if we decided to do so, what we would have to put into a new measure?
I'm gonna make an alternate suggestion, because my, my focus here is on getting us from where we are to where we need to be if we actually want to put something on the ballot. So my suggestion is, we ask our, our staff and consultants to put together two versions. One that does the consecutive piece, that's Measure J and Measure X, and the second one that does the language that, that modifies J, then we can actually have it in a public fashion, the public can weigh in on it, our respective city councils can, can have a look at it, and when we come back to discuss it and finalize it, we're actually in a position to do that.
That's, I would, but I would add that to the legal analysis.
Yeah, 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 definitely do that.
All right, I'd like to move on to the next item, we're down to less than an hour to go, and we still have several items on our agenda.
I have a simple question.
Okay, Commissioner Abelson.
Which is, that this only applies, what you just said, only applies to those cities that are using the county ULL, right?
This will only apply to cities that make an under 30-acre adjustment to the urban limit line, without a vote.
If you have your own, it doesn't apply if you have your own?
Yes. Yes, it does. It applies to everybody.
Yes, for return-to-source.
Okay, so it overrides?
Right.
No, it didn't? Okay, I, okay, that was my question, okay.
All right, so I'd like to move on to items 1.2.3, which is the discussion, 1.2.2 of, hang on, where am I?
Yeah, it's 1.2.2, Chair.
Yeah, 1.2.2, right. The governing structure.
Yes, thank you, and this is the item that we, has a rollover from our, our last meeting, and we really didn't have a meaningful discussion on that, so we're bringing it back. I did get just a couple of comments in the two or three minutes, or one or two minutes that we did discuss it, and tried to clarify some of those in the staff report, so you do see some. do see some underlying language in there. And again, the, the whole purpose of, of having this in the T E P is outlined, and again, this is a, a decision, it's not necessarily, it's certainly not a, a final proposal that this must be in the, the T E P. Generally, uh, at least in the past, for us and in other counties, some of these requirements are, are put in the ordinance. And, and more recent years, as you look through some of the measures that have gone to the ballot, they're starting to show them more in the expenditure plan itself, and it's really just for transparency purpose. So it's really not changing anything, it's just where does it appear? So, so really, there, there's two things that you would see here. Because of the way we're showing this, you're going to see some things that are duplicative between sections of the T E P. And that's probably okay, and we'll make sure that we do a, a check on that consistency. And then, in other cases, what you'd see is that some of these policies that are suggested are beefed up a little bit from within Measure J. Quickly going through each, the governing structure, the, the governing body and administration as proposed in here remains unchanged. So that was one of the questions, and I think that will probably be part of a question of our legal analysis too. If we have separate measures, can they be same body? So maybe you can add that to your, your, to do here. So added a comment to clarify that. Staff's intent is that both measures would be administered by the same body. So if we can do that, that would certainly be our recommendation. Possibly we'll hear comments from the Board of Supervisors on the discussion that occurred at their meeting about, um, uh, some of the leadership roles in the Executive Committee. I'd like to point out that, uh, the election of the Chair and the Vice Chair and our Exec, our Executive Committee are in our administrative code, neither of those are in the ordinance. So whatever direction we take on that would not necessarily need to affect Measure J. The current Executive Committee has four members, so that may, as I understand it, the Board may ask for a standing seat, possibly a fifth seat on, on the Executive Committee. If you look at page 27, the advisory committees remain unchanged, our T P Cs, the T C C, Peer Transit Coordinating Council, Bike Ped Committee, Transit Committee. The significant change, and I know SWAT commented on this, I'm not sure any, any of the other R T P Cs did, was to revise the makeup and powers of what we're calling a Citizens Oversight Committee that would replace the Citizens Advisory Committee. One of the comments we did get, and will recommend for the next version, is that we change that to Public Oversight Committee. Apparently the word citizen has an unintended meaning that we weren't necessarily trying to put in there. And, and it was a matter. And the, what we pulled together for this Oversight Committee, it's, it's largely based on models, again, that we've seen in some recent measures. We borrowed quite a bit from BART and, and what they were putting in their new bond measure and what we saw in Alameda, Alameda Measure B B. That's, I, I think the intent was that in augmenting the Citizens Advisory Committee, we would add some professional staff and some advocacy staff in addition to public-appointed staffs. So I think, uh, those are a couple of questions, is that an appropriate move? And then, if we do that, we could end up with a very, very large committee, so are we setting up a body that's really functional? The powers, and, and we could work with the comments from SWAT, really with the, the powers, what we wanted to provide this group is, and, and again, this is why we want to add both professional advisory staff, is that, um, if, if we look at the implementing guidelines, we'll also see we're recommending that about a fourth of the programs be evaluated each year. So about every four years, each of the programs would one, have one kind of performance review, and we'd ask this committee to take an independent assessment of the findings that would come out of that evaluation. So we'll talk about that in a minute, of whether the appropriateness of, uh, this type of performance review. But this would be a, a report that would be provided to this body, independent of any kind of report or evaluation that you would get provided through staff and the Executive Director. So that's, the, again, the intent is that it's still purely advisory, we don't really want to assign any powers to the group to have a, a role to deny appropriations or, or recall any, any type of funding. So it's still, the intent is that it would be an advisory body to you, mainly with the intent of improving the performance of the programs in the future, learning from how we're executing the programs today. And what we've listed in here, we think is a common list of duties that we've seen out of those other measures. Implementing guidelines, um.
Ross, what page are you on? It's hard to follow. Well, no, you was like.
It's on my notes.
29 of 30. It's on.
The, the implementing guidelines are between pages 27 and 30.
Okay, I'm still in the same place.
Yep, yep. It's in the board packet. This one was actually in the board packet. One of the things that we will be proposing in the next version is to clean up the intent of item two, which is, uh, the administrative costs. We want to clarify an intent that that's over the life of the measure, recognizing that we may have swings in, in the revenue, and if, if we had a significant downturn, we want, want to have to, um, adjust year to year to those fluctuations, and make the, sure the intent is over the life of the measure. Item eight, this is what I talked about a little earlier, about some of the performance reviews. So, um, there's some language that needs to be clarified in there. What, what the first sentence is intended to say is that one-fourth of the funding categories in the expenditure plan. So, so again, if you take out the project side of it, that turns into about, every four years, each of the programs would get an evaluation. And, and the intent is that the performance audits, to see if the program's achieving the intended outcome, and an efficient cost affect a manner, and if not, to make recommendations to the Board that could turn into changes to guidelines or changes to policies, et cetera. The item 10, we'll, we'll continue to work on, the intent is to find that, uh, certain auditing and reporting requirements for all recipients of funds. We currently have, uh, three audits that we, um, uh, compliance audits that we perform every year. So Randy Carlton has some suggestions on this item. This is intended that we do maybe a little more frequency of audits. And then, it also requires, as, as all, at least the public agency recipients, that they adhere to certain audit findings that you all, or audit processes that you all do. 15, 16, 17, and 18, these are examples of some of the guidelines that are redundant with other sects, sections of the, the expenditure plan. But we're, uh, we think it's okay to repeat these, because some folks are going to be looking at it for these things in different parts of the plan. Section 19, local contracting and good jobs, this section is maybe a little bit of a placeholder, so we have some meetings with some local labor folks over the next couple of weeks, and we can flesh out some proposals for that. And sections 21 through 25 are similar to Measure J. So with that, I would like to turn it back to the Chair and entertain any questions.
So I will take comments initially from Commissioner Butt.
So does Measure J have some kind of citizen oversight now?
Yeah, we have a Citizens Oversight Committee that's made up of a representative from each jurisdiction. So you, through, generally, it is through action of the council would solicit.
That's news, that's news to me. I've never heard of it. Or, do they exist? Have they ever done anything?
They, the Citizens Advisory Committee, and to a great extent, yeah, we have a, we have the Chair here, as a matter of fact, and their role now is advisory, and largely they review the checklist. That's, of the biggest thing they do is to review the checklist before it comes here. So this would provide some additional.
Tell me again, who, who are they and where are they from?
Each jurisdiction, um.
Jurisdiction meaning what? Each city?
Each city in the county, yeah. So I, I'm not sure, each, each one probably has a different.
So there's somebody representing my city? Who is it?
I, we, we do, we have vacancies. It's not uncommon to have some prolonged vacancies.
Well, I got to tell you, you guys may know all about this, but for me, it's, this is brand, I've never heard of it.
Well, then I can go home tomorrow morning and figure out who it is. Now I can go home tomorrow morning and figure out who it is for Richmond or appoint somebody.
If you guys can figure out who's supposed to be representing Richmond, let me know, I appreciate it.
Okay, so I'd like to welcome the Chair of the Citizens Advisory Committee.
So, um, the, the second part of it is, is that, you know, at the risk of offending some people, I'm, I'm not a big fan of these, of these committees. I, I think it's just an extra layer of bureaucracy, takes up a lot of staff time. Um, you know, I think that, I think that fiscal audits, performance audits, peer reviews, all done by, uh, by objective third parties and, and with transparency and making information available to the public, I, I think it's a great thing. But in my opinion, these, these oversight committees are just, I mean, I, I don't, I think they're a waste of time.
It helps get the measure passed.
If that's, if that's what we got to do to get it passed, I'm all for it.
Good comment. All right, I'd like to briefly welcome the, the Chair of the current committee. And if you could just fill out a speaker's list when you're done, so we'll have it for our record.
Unfortunately, for Commissioner Butt's, um, I can't call up real quickly on the website the minutes of the last meeting, but we are supposed to have a representative from every city plus the county. We have had some difficulties in attracting and retaining members since the Form 700 requirement was put on us.
Right.
Our basic function, we have had two basic functions. One is to review and kind of recommend approval of the compliance checklist that everybody submits every two years. And we've carried out that function in general. There has rarely been an issue where we would not recommend approval. We've tended to focus on how they're doing, on meeting their housing requirements, with the recognition that that's been pretty difficult the past few years. The other function that we have had is mainly to stay somewhat current on what's going on, so that we can go back to our individual cities. Now, as I said at the last meeting in public comment, um, it seems to me that, looking at the cyclical nature of the work we have been doing, and when the fiscal and audit items seem to come up, they seem to come up at different times in the yearly cycle. So a single committee doing both could probably work well. I just realized that if we're talking about adding several other people to the committee as it is currently structured with the 20 representatives, that would make for a very large committee.
Mr. Tats.
So we might have to look at, maybe, instead of a representative per, or you might want to look at a, instead of a representative per jurisdiction, maybe a couple of representatives per our, our, per sub-region, determined by the subregions committee, if you need to cut down on the number of people, but still maintain people who have local knowledge for the area they're representing. So if there are any other questions I can answer, I'm happy to do so.
So Commissioner Arderich and Commissioner Mitchoff.
I, actually, I was just going to make a statement. I believe that our public oversight's really important. I have served on those for other jurisdictions. One of our current council members got his transportation background by being representative for Danville. And I know Tom's going to go back now and find out his predecessor never filled the position, that's why he didn't know about it.
You, you don't have, it's vacant.
So, yeah, well, there's six vacancies on there right now. So, um, I, I think it is important, but, but I think I have two points, and one that Ross mentioned at the very end concerns me. One, we need to keep it simple, and I think what SWAT and some of the other jurisdictions have said, how to do the representation, I think a new mixture of that. But on the item where it says, um, projects of over $25 million, shall I have this additional review? And this is on page 29 of 30. It's item 14, performance-based review. If you read the, the item above, it's environmental root. There is no project that we can do here at $25 million that doesn't have an E I R, environmental documentation. That is kind of a catch, I, I get the point. But what we ought to make sure is that in the environmental review process, that there's also a section included on compliance with S B 375 and A B 32. Because in spirit, that's what we're supposed to be doing, although SEQA doesn't necessarily require all of that, they have separate legislation. But we ought to tie those together, we ought to demonstrate that. But we shouldn't be producing, that kind of a report could cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars to do every time we try to do, on top of the, the hundreds of thousands of dollars we're already spending. That is not what public oversight, public oversight should actually weigh in, send us recommendations, say, hey, we've looked at the environmental documentation, we, we believe in it, and give us the comments, just like any other group. But I wouldn't rewrite and create this new report. And the last item, I would say, is, um, you said it would be, have staff, and then advocate staff. That's not a position. We either have staff, which is our authority of staff, if somebody wants to be on that committee, they have to fall into one of those categories. But we can't allow a special group, regardless how much we love them, and want to hug them, but we can't give them a special seat calling them staff or something. We cannot do that. I, I don't think that's an appropriate way. That's not transparent, because some groups out there are going to look at as we're giving a, sort of a backdoor seat of oversight. We want to be transparent about this, that hopefully, we choose qualified people who represent all these various backgrounds. And I think that's incumbent upon us and jurisdictions that don't appoint people, to get people who are engaged.
Commissioner Mitchoff, and then I have a suggestion.
Thank you. I actually have, this is where words matter. To me, an advisory committee does just what you were talking about, but citizens or public oversight, I interpreted that to mean, partly as a result of the polling, that that was one of the components that the public wanted. And I look at it as a sales tax measure, or whatever taxing measure, this is a sales tax. But we had it for school districts, we have it, that this is something to make sure that the public's money is spent well. And just as we had the last conversation on the overlap, and or not overlap of Measure J and Measure C, or pardon me, Measure J and the new measure, um, this might be something to, I'm, I'm not, it's hard to say we don't need an advisory committee, but there's enough public comment. I'd rather not have an advisory committee and an oversight, if, my interpretation of oversight is that it's making sure the dollars are spent well. And I really understand where Newell's coming from. I'm not looking for an oversight committee to look at the environmental review. That's what public comment is for when we're doing that. I see oversight, and what I think the poll came back as, is the public wants to know that these dollars are being spent well. We know the dollars are being spent well, but that's how I interpret it. So if others thought it was more in an advisory role, I think we need to have that conversation. I would advocate for the oversight, and I would even recommend that it be one per R T P C with an alternate. And, uh, you know, we need an odd number in there. So the county would have one at large and an alternate, that would get that, that would be five members. I don't think most oversights are very large, they're, they're no more than 10. And I'll leave it to staff to talk about, you know, the professionals that need to be in the room on that. But that would be something that I would throw out for you all to consider, we don't have to make the decision tonight. But, um, again, when I saw oversight, I always assumed it was oversight of the tax dollar, and not, you should be doing this, you should be doing that. I mean, that's what the R T P Cs are, go there, make your comments, you know, we, and I've said.
Can I suggest, given the hour and the comments, that we, that I sense that there's a, a general consensus that a 30-plus or minus person committee is too big? And we're not quite sure how to get there. So maybe staff could bring us back two or three alternatives of how you could slim it down, so, you know, who would represent, Commissioner Mitchoff has given us one example, SWAT had some different examples, neither one is better than the other. And then let's, I think if we could look at them side by side, that may help focus our discussion. Is that acceptable? Commissioner Murray?
I was going to say similar things, but I do want to comment on what Karen said, looking that the money is spent well. I don't think that they should be looking that it's spent well, because that's a judgment on the projects that this body has chosen. I think they should do what the, the bullets on the first section say, which is looking to see whether it meets what the. to see whether it meets what was promised to the voters, whether it meets the performance criteria that this body has set up, yeah, but not getting into, well, that wasn't a good measure.
Yeah, I, I know. You're absolutely right, Gail, and, and you've probably had more experience with this at bar. I just think there's so many things here. I don't want it to be advisory. I want it to have meat around it.
Right. And, and I think this gives them meat. It, they, there is things that are set up that they have to look at and make sure it follows it, and tell the public, yes, it did follow this, or no, it didn't.
I agree. I'm just worried about that ballot language where somebody says that they're, they're suggesting an oversight committee, but it really has no teeth.
Right.
And I don't know if spending the money well is the right term, but, uh, that, that what you're saying, only as it is attached to dollars, that they said they were gonna build this road for this amount, did that get done? That's what I was talking about.
Yeah.
Just, and Commissioner Durant, do you have something to add on? Okay.
I do.
Go ahead.
Um, so, so, yeah, Commissioner Taylor said in my ear what I was about to say, which is, I think oversight here means watchdog. So, it, it, to me, means that it's a body that's going to essentially audit the way that this, the funding is being spent, and they're gonna make public disclosures about it. They're gonna inform the bar, the board about what's being done that's, that's consistent with the measure, and if there are issues or places where it's not, um, all of which seems fine to me. When we get to the restriction on funds section, which starts on page 28 of 30, the language of this changes. And, and my only question about it is whether, whether, how do I wanna say this? In, in writing the language this way, right, we are intending to actually have the oversight committee comment on these particular buckets, or if in fact, these are real absolute requirements. Um, and the devil's gonna be in some, in the details on this. But, so, for example, I get number 12, 'cause number 12 is, is consistent with what we talked about, although the language of it needs to be tied to what we've already said with the OLL. Number 12, for the benefit of the listening public, is no expenditure outside of the, of Contra Costa County. So, if the urban limit line changes, it's still in the county, blah, 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 it's fine, but it's all, that seems to me to be caveated or need to be. Um, the environmental review, I think it's, it's, you know, I don't know why there's a need to restate, uh, existing law, but it's fine to do so, but it's something I'd want the oversight committee to be commenting on. Um, I'm okay with the notion that, that is in the comment on number 14, on performance-based reviews. The complete streets, one number 15, seems to me to sort of jump the pond a bit. Um, given that we're talking about having a complete streets program to make all funding tied to the measure dependent on conformance with complete streets requirements, seems to me a bridge too far. That, and so, that's part of what I'm sort of getting is that, I think if, at, if, if these essentially are guiding principles, that's one thing. If these are gonna be requirements for funding, then we're, then we're actually adding requirements that really weren't consistent with what we've been talking about. So, I'd like to get some clarity on that. Um, and I won't go through the rest of them. It's, the same thing really applies with respect to virtually all of the rest of them through page 30. That talk in terms of the words shall, as opposed to, you know, that's what's gonna be what the, the committee is commenting on. Uh, or, or frankly, is advising us with respect to, that's, that's where I'm having some question.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Well, hopefully that will come, options for that will come back at our subsequent meeting. I would like, Ross?
Well, yeah, I could comment real quick. I think it's a very good comment, 'cause they, um, I, I see what you're saying, you tie these two together, 'cause part of the, uh, implementing guidelines are, you know, some of the rules we'll set out in advance, but also, as I think Supervisor Mitchoff pointed out, a lot of it is just to communicate to the people who are gonna vote on it, what the intent is. So, we'll cross-reference this consistency and be a little more specific about, um, uh, what the oversight group would, would do. And again, I, I, I think it was summarized well that it's really about, uh, independence and disclosure than anything else.
Okay. Thank you. So, I'd like to move on to 1.2.3, which is the discussion of the complete streets policy.
Mr. Todd from Gray Bull and Scott.
Mr. Todd, welcome.
Scott's going to, uh, join in. So, I, we'd like to thank everyone who's given us a hand on this, Bill and Matt, and, uh, Hisham, and Brad, and we'll hear from Martin as well. So, thanks, everybody.
Matt Todd with Gray Bull and Scott. Um, so, I wanna, uh, just brief you a bit on the complete streets policy. We've spent a lot of time with the EPAC membership on this topic. Um, and a, as we've heard in past meetings, it's a high priority for many of the EPAC folks. Um, one of the primary items to note is that this complete streets is, it's made part and parcel with the major streets funding category. And as we go through this policy, you'll see there's, there is a, a nexus there between these major streets of how we get from our homes to wherever we need to travel on our day-to-day basis and the complete streets, uh, concept. Uh, the ultimate goal of the complete streets is to ex, expand capacity and improve mobility for all users with each of our transportation projects. This material in the packet reflects the language that was in the TEP version 1.1, so what you saw last week, and the red line strikeouts are the changes to that version. Um, in general, what this, uh, revised version of the complete streets is, it's really, uh, tightening up what you know about complete streets already. Everyone is already as a local agency to get federal funds through MTC. You've adopted some complete street standards and are, are doing a lot of great complete street stuff. Um, what, uh, the language here tonight is, it's really focusing and clarifying certain aspects of some of those complete streets, uh, policies. Um, it's providing for some, uh, input opportunities in that process, and it also is calling out that access to transit is an important part of major streets, uh, complete streets. So, as you look at the, the funding category, the funding description, one of the main things that has been added is there is a call for four demonstration projects or marquee projects. Uh, it's calling for one in each sub-region. Um, and the idea behind that was that to have an example of a successful complete streets project that is on different types of streets throughout the county and the different areas of the county, as we have our diverse county. Um, it is also calling for 30% of these major street, complete streets funds to go towards these demonstration projects. And it also puts a, a timeframe on it that, it says three years in there, but the idea is that to get some good complete streets projects that are well-funded out there in the early years of the measure, so we can see these examples and the public can see the examples. Um, when you get into the, the complete streets policy section of the, of the language, uh, one of the things that it's added is it builds on the peer review process that the CCTA already has in place for developing projects, and kind of calls out, look at complete streets while you're doing that peer review process as well. Um, it also adds that CCTA would look at some, uh, some best practice design standards. There are, there are groups throughout the nation that are looking at this, and that, that's something that, uh, some folks around the state are using as, when they update a bike or ped plan. Part of that is making a toolkit and saying, here's some good design standards that are being used in other parts of the state or nation. And that becomes a tool for your, you as local agencies to, uh, to have some examples of things you could look at as well. Um, we are also, it also includes, uh, opportunity for public input early on in the project design process, and that the discussion behind this was to get, have that discussion early on while the, uh, design, before the design is nailed down, so that you get some ideas out there about what is possible for whatever project you're It continues to, uh, use the GMP process as the monitoring process, um, as well. So, now, one of the things is complete streets, it is based on, one of the key words in any complete streets policy is this context-sensitive design or context-sensitive solution, that every street is a little different, they have different users, different mix of modes, so there is no one solution for any given project. Um, so with that, there is also an exception process, which has also been in place in the past. Um, so, if there is an exception needed for, uh, certain types of improvements on any given project, the exceptions can range from, it is prohibited by law, you cannot walk on the freeways, it's prohibited by law, you're not gonna build a sidewalk on the freeways. Uh, there are cost, uh, exceptions, excessive cost, and then also, just based on projected demands of that facility or projected conflicts, um, what kind of, uh, improvements you need in your project. Um, so, going back to the start, I said, this major streets and complete streets are tied together in, in this policy, in this funding category. So, one of the things in the exception that we're adding, that's being added, is that, uh, we want to focus on the larger streets, the major collectors and above, major collectors and arterials. And that goes to, we gotta get from, getting from the neighborhoods to where you need to go, whether it's your business, where you're working, you're shopping, you're, uh, going to the movies. And that, if there's an exception for a project on one of these major streets, major collectors are above, that also, as you go through that exception process, you, there's a time for public input on that as well, so that there's discussion about what the proposed project is and, and how it's being put forward. And with that, I'd, uh, be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah. Are there any questions? Commissioner Abelson, Commissioner Rock?
Um, yes. Well, I'm a little bit confused about, uh, this, the process that would be, uh, that this would do. Would this, um, methodology produce a, uh, complete streets plan or guidelines? Or, what I'm concerned about in my particular case of my city is that we, uh, have a specific plan that contains a complete streets plan already, uh, for San Pablo Avenue, the entire length of our city. And, um, we happen to like it, we passed it. It, you know, it went through all of the processes that it needed to go through to get accepted. And, um, let's say that we, uh, you know, install, you know, that we've actually got it implemented in, at some level. We certainly would not have it implemented completely, but, you know, does that mean that we have to then go, turn around and do it all over again to conform to this, or, or does this mean that we just need to have a complete streets plan in our city?
It, it does not require that you need to have a, a specific complete streets plan, or that, that's nowhere in any of this language.
Okay.
Um, my, my, thinking off the top of my head, is that you've gone through this public process, and you've defined what this complete streets has looked like, and you've gotten that public input, and you would, you, you should get credit for that in this process. Um, I think this would, this is this policy statement on a one- or two-page, uh, technical level, so that once the TEP was passed, there would be maybe more specific policy, uh, how to implement this policy, and that something, having a complete streets plan in place for a facility should, should get you credit for going out and getting your public input.
But will it, will we have to undo our, what we've spent so much time and effort doing? That's what I'm wondering.
I do not believe so.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Butts?
Um, well, this whole thing's pretty murky to me. I, I'm, I'm gonna jump back and then jump forward, but jumping back, you know, going back to funding categories, you know, we had separate categories for local street maintenance and improvements, and major streets and complete street project grants. So, I've always wondered why, you know, why you separate that out, particularly if you have a complete streets policy built into this, and since a lot of federal and state grants, um, you know, also include that. So, if you do major street work, the chances are, somebody's gonna compel you to do it in a way that recognizes complete streets. So, now, now let's jump forward to this particular policy. And, you know, on the face, it looks great. It's got a lot of good stuff in it, except it's got no guts. Uh, the exception part basically gives the, uh, Public Works Director carte blanche to decide whether he needs to do it or not. And there's nothing to prevent him from just saying, I'm not gonna do this because of one of the exceptions, and, and, uh, write up a finding, and, you know, so, so, so there's no, there's no substance to this. And then, then I'm gonna jump forward and, and reference something that we haven't gotten to yet tonight, and that's the, the performance evaluation. And this was really an eye-opener for me. I mean, I've been going through this thinking that, thinking that there's a whole lot of sustainability and built into this, and this is transformative. And you go here and you look at all these performance data, it, almost every, in almost every performance category, we're gonna end up, by 2040, we're gonna end up at best equal to where we are now, and in many cases, worse. And the only thing, the only thing that makes this, uh, conceptually compliant with, uh, with all the state standards from SB 32 on up to the governor's most recent policy, um, policy positions, is, uh, is, uh, the, uh, the Pavly standards for reduction of emissions. It's kinda like, it's kinda like there's nothing we're doing in this program that's really, uh, that's really gonna make Contra Costa County more sustainable, that's gonna enable us to reduce vehicle miles traveled, that's gonna enable us to reduce greenhouse gases, except that we're depending on the state to implement, um, implement these, uh, these fuel mileage standards, and that's gonna take care of all that. So, I, I gotta say, I'm really disappointed, you know. I think this, I think there's a lot of bait and switch in here. And, um, I, it's just, I was hoping this would be transformative, and it's not. It's really business as usual. And, and we're putting the whole burden on the state to make us compliant with these, uh, with these greenhouse gas reduction standards.
Commissioner Durant, and then Commissioner Murray?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple of things on this. First, um, with respect to page one of three, uh, in this section on the description for the, the major streets, complete streets, I think three years for demonstration projects is a little bit too tight of a timeline, given how long it takes for jurisdictions to actually do the planning and all that. So, I would make it five years. Um, second, I, I actually think that it's important that we have, uh, a requirement that a certain number of these actually do have, um, well, first of all, that we say that it's for demonstration or marquee projects, which isn't in the text today, but is in the comment, but I think should be in the text, so that we're clear that's what we're doing. Um, but then I think it's also i, i, important that we have something that clarifies that in at least two of these complete streets notions, we have to have some very defined bike lane components. I think if we're doing demonstration projects to help show, you know, what can be done, that we have to have at least two of these, is my view, two out of the four. Have dedicated bike lanes of, you know, of, of, you know, one kind or another, the details of which should be worked out by those who are knowledgeable. But if, if we have it so that there's not that requirement, you could sort of end up with four demonstration projects that don't have it. And, and then it's got, you know, sort of limited utility. So, I would, I would plunk that in there as a requirement. Otherwise, I think the, the direction this is going is the right way.
My comment is very simple one. The public has no idea what a complete street is. So, if this is gonna be a big component of it, we have to figure out a better way of describing it, 'cause they don't know what it is. I think about all abilities playgrounds. They get that. If we could get something like that, put that together to explain it, because, um, we can't market complete streets. Huh?
Commissioner Arndt?
Um, sort of a cloud view of this. It's a $200 million allocation, and it was a big lift for the RTCPs to agree to give 58% of all that money, or 54% of all that money to Central County. Um, it's not normally how we do equity, but there's a lot of reasons for that. And that, the problem is, we've, that there are, you know, folks that are trying to rewrite this in such a way, that of that $200 million, very little of that's ever gonna get spent. And if you look on, um, um, right under the detailed descriptions of funding categories, and that's page one of three, and about two-thirds of the way down, just above, two sentences above the red text, it says, "Funding from this program will be prioritized to projects that will improve access to transit stations, transit-oriented communities," and read on. Well, you just eliminated eight of the cities.
Yeah.
Out of 19. They don't have any of that. So, that means if that rule is in there, you can't do that. So, we need to, we need to think about that. That ought to be deleted. Talk about, as, um, Gil Murray said, what are we defining as complete streets, so everybody understands it really in a, in a simple, um, way. And then it goes- And then it goes on, the 30% of the funding is, as Commissioner Durant was talking about, not everybody on the smaller allocations can get a project. And also, the worst thing they try to do is do a project that has no value or meaning. That, that shouldn't be a, a requirement to demonstrate, demonstrate a bad project. You know what? That money is there based on the criteria that's going to fit each of those cities. And some of us do a better job in doing complete streets, others are newer cities, you know, they got a lot of work to do. They need to look at all the multimodal transportation. So I'll be honest, I think, behalf of most of the cities, those two need to come out. But write the definitions of what complete streets are. Don't, don't put handcuffs on, and basically, "I'm not giving $200 million to Central County." You're not going to happen. And, and we don't want that. I mean, that's, that's all of a sudden, the equity issue's off. That's the delicate balance, and I'm really impressed, when you look at how we've come up with these allocations, we've done a good job. But let's not put language that then says, "Most of us can't ever do anything," because we don't have transit-oriented developments, we're not in that business.
So I'd like to, we have a couple of speaker slots, I'd like to take them next, and then Commissioner Simmons after that's over. So Dave Campbell, please. And then Ron Leoni.
On the bottom, on the, on, under, on the bottom of the microphone, there's a switch. Take it out. Look at the bottom, on the real bottom.
The bottom.
There you go, that bottom.
Sure.
Yeah, switch. There we go.
That was not intuitive.
No, I know.
Thank you.
That might design.
Advocacy Director with Bikies Bay, I want to start off by complimenting the staff and the team for putting the complete streets policy and the complete streets program together. They are two different things with similar names, that could perhaps have a better name, I'm, I'm open to that. The idea with the complete streets program, the original idea with it, is to start redesigning some of our streets, our busy streets, so that they work for all users. And, and I don't mind giving El Cerrito a little credit here, their San Pablo Avenue Complete Street Project, which has been approved but not funded yet, is probably the best example we have of what could become a complete street in Contra Costa County. And, and certainly if this program goes forward, I could see that project getting submitted. That would make a lot of sense. In fact, you're, you're ready, you've queued that one up for this program, there's nothing else you need to do other than submit the application. The reason complete streets ended up in the major streets category, that was sort of a, a practical matter. It doesn't have to be there, it can live its own life as a complete street program, or it could be part of the Local Streets and Road Program. I'm open to both of those. I thought it would fit best in major streets, and maybe, I don't know if I recommended it or if it's staff did, because it's really the busy streets are the challenge. You know, getting a good bikeway through a neighborhood is no big deal. You know, building a bike path is, the only big deal is finding the money to do, we know how to do it. But boy, how do you make the busy streets work for everybody? In years past, we would just widen it, let's just widen it. And yeah, let's widen it and add a bike lane, too, and a wider sidewalk, yeah, yeah, yeah. We can't keep widening our streets, we have to redesign them so they work for everybody. And that means making sometimes transit better, shuttles better, walking better, much safer for sure, adding bikeways. We should be adding protected bikeways to all of these projects, not just two out of four. That's certainly the idea with the, with the pilot projects. And to make these streets more efficient for moving people. And it's going to be tough, this, this San Pablo Avenue project, it is, it's not going to be, it was not an easy project to design, to make that street work for everybody. We had to do a, a smart, I don't know what it was called, smart interconnect, signal interconnect, and the street has to talk to the freeway, and we've got bus rapid transit coming on there, and they're putting in protected bike lanes. Not an easy thing to do, we had to make it work with the BART stations there, there's a freeway that goes right by there, that dumps a whole bunch of traffic on there. It's a tough project, but it's going to be a lot better place for Richmond and El Cerrito residents to get around, once we get that done. We want to do four pilot projects to show what we mean by this. We don't mean widening streets and adding a bike lane. That's a Band-Aid, or that's not a Band-Aid. That's an improvement on yesterday's project. We want to start redesigning tomorrow's projects. And, and that's why the, the pilot program is so important, to get it going in the first few years, to show if, if it's San Pablo Avenue, if it's Treat Boulevard, if it's Railroad Abbott, there's lots of good candidate projects out there. So the, the complete streets program is in good shape, I, I really like that. An open question there is this distribution of the major streets money, Central gets half of it, and the rest of the county doesn't. I would like to see that more equitably distributed, so we can have more complete streets and better arterials throughout the county. And we'll, we'll continue those discussions, but that's, that's an open question, because it does suggest what we're going to do here with major streets, is fund the projects we've had in mind for the last five or 10 years. And we're not going to start designing complete streets with this money. So we're going to have to work out that issue. But the pilot program is looking in great shape, so thank you again to the team on that. For the complete streets policy, each of your cities has one right now. The MTC ordered you to do it, and some of you had already done it, and everybody fell in line for sure, have a complete streets policy. This is an improvement on that policy.
I think the three-minute timer has passed.
I was waiting for something.
Right.
We're going to have a policy, thank you.
All right, thank you. Ron Leoni, and then Rita Xavier?
Hello again, Ron Leoni, Vice Mayor, City of Concord. And you guys could correct me if I'm misinterpreting some of this, because there are four concerns that I have. And so let me go through those. You know, the City of Concord already has an extensive policy on complete streets in our general plan, and it shares the same vision as the proposed complete street policy listed in the TEP. The first thing, the proposed policy states, if I'm reading this right, "The authority shall revise its project development guidelines to require the consideration and accommodation of all users in the design, construction, and operation of the projected funded with measure funds." Now, I could see the authority specifying standard guidelines for the design and the construction of the complete street capital improvement projects, but it appears to me that it may be inappropriate to have the authority impose guidelines on how new facilities ought to be operating after construction. And so if that's what the intent is, I, it needs to be clarified. I'm also concerned, number two, about overloading the compliance checklist with more reporting requirements, considering that the cities have, you know, finite staffing resources to handle their respective CIP programs. You know, by adding more guidelines and more reporting requirements, you know, you run the risk of discouraging cities from pursuing good projects as a result of overwhelming staff with more administrative work. Number three, the proposed policy requires project sponsors to explicitly approve exception, exceptions findings for any project using measure funds. We already have policy in our general plan to apply a complete streets checklist for review of proposed transportation improvement projects, as well as exceptions findings process. This process is included in our complete street policy, and it is appropriate, however, we believe this should be sufficient. And then finally, number four, the proposed policy states that prior to any project using measures funds to improve streets classified as a major collector or above, project sponsors must provide an opportunity for public input at an approval body and/or the governing board of the project sponsor. And we feel that approval authority is not necessary at this stage of the project, instead, public meetings are more appropriate in the early stages of project development, as well as project review by the Bicycle and PED Advisory Committee of the project sponsor. So I ask that the Authority Board and Staff consider Concord's feedback on the proposed complete street policies. And like I said, I, I may be incorrect in my reading of this, so I certainly would ask for any clarification, if, if that is indeed the case. Thank you.
Next speaker is Rita Xavier.
Good evening, I'm Rita Xavier, I'm on EPAC and PCC. I'm also a member of the San Pablo Planning Commission, so I've been very involved in city planning. The cities of San Pablo and Richmond work together with the Contra Costa County Health Services on two complete streets projects. One was San Pablo Avenue, and one was Rumble Boulevard, 13th Street. Both of them received grants. We had a huge amount of public input. I was on the Technical Advisory Committee for the Rumble Boulevard one, I've worked on both projects. The public came out for those, and the one on San Pablo Avenue had absolutely no sidewalks, and of course, no bike lanes. People were walking on the hillside, because there are hills on both sides, and they made themselves a goat path, a very, very dangerous area. Kids, people with babies, and so on. And I really believe in the complete streets projects, and I think that more of the public understands what complete streets means than, than what some members have said. Thank you.
Thank you. Bring it back to the Authority, Commissioner Simmons wanted to make a comment.
I, I would, but I'm going to add one thing to what I was originally going to say. Having just gotten back recently from the nation of Colombia, I had the opportunity to see pedestrians, bicycles, horse-drawn carts, man-pulled carts, and vehicles driven by individuals, all in the same single lane. I, I don't know if that quite qualifies as a complete street, as we're using the term, but it certainly functioned in that way. As Commissioner Durant knows, last year, we, the cities of Pleasant Hill and Walnut Creek approved the opening of a complete street project on Gary Road from Main to Taylor. And I just wanted to offer a thought that, I'm not sure there's a huge value in the pilot project at part of this, from the standpoint that, two points. One, our, our city engineers and our traffic people know how to design a complete street, they really do, and, you know, I, you know, maybe there's some benefit to the public, but my guess is, if you get outside of the cities of Pleasant Hill, Walnut Creek, and Lafayette, no one knows if there's a complete street somewhere in that, that jurisdiction. So I'm not, I'm not all that persuaded about that part. The second part, that particular project started about 20 years ago, and I think even five years is an incredibly optimistic timeframe to get one of these things created, designed, and built. I just wanted to offer those thoughts for your consideration.
In terms of the SWAT discussion, and we also felt that five, three years was too short, a period, to get demonstration projects in place. We thought that the idea of a demonstration projects was a good one. We questioned whether four projects should get 30% of the funding, we thought that might be too high. And I, and I would point out that in terms of how the money is allocated across regions, as the chart says, it's split proportional to the RTPC requests.
And the bottom line balance is based on that.
Right, and, and so...
You can't arbitrarily move it.
Right, you can't move it among regions without the region deciding to cut something else, you really have to balance it vertically, not horizontally. Other comments, because we're sort of running, it's our normal bewitching hour.
Well, Mr. Leoni brought up several points, I'm assuming staff is going to address those as we move forward, either yea or nay, or, you know, in some fashion. Thank you.
Thanks, three, three short points. The first is, I think, and, and staff should, should do some further, but I saw nothing in this that would have supplanted anything that was in any particular city's complete streets program. This is in addition to, and if there's stuff that's already in the city versions that, that qualifies for meeting this, then it's, it's all good. And so I think the, the whole idea here is to, to augment and add, and I think that's an appropriate thing. Second, I, I want to just echo what the Chair Tatsin said, I didn't see the $200 million as, as it's worded here, being a reallocation of what was on the chart, and perhaps we just need to say that more clearly. And then the third is, how do I say this? I, I think part of the idea between a demonstration, or with respect to demonstration projects, whether it's been said or not, and maybe I'm wrong in this, but I'll ask for staff to identify if this is the case, is, is if we do, we have a commitment to do a certain number of projects in a short space of time, it actually shows that we're serious about doing these. And so I think the concept here is, put it in here with some requirement that within a certain defined period of time, there, there are a number of these projects that will be built using this source of funds, and that demonstrates to the voters and to the people who are asking to come out in, in support of this, that we're actually serious about making sure these things get built. And, and that's the concept behind the demonstration project. One, I agree with it, and two, I think it's a really good idea.
Well, I was just assuming that we want to adjourn at roughly nine o'clock, and I sort of see nods. There are two people who wanted to speak on the TEP, and I'd like to allow them to do that while they're, while we're here, and then adjourn to the next meeting. So Lisa Wrodebragan? Welcome.
Good evening, Lisa Wrodebragan, from BIA Bay Area. I'll be very, very brief, because I, too, would like to go home. I just wanted to, to let you know that a sub-EPAC group, we continue to meet, and we are, I think the phrase we, we used today was, "Hopeful that we will come up with a proposal from, that would include the business community, the builders, and the environmental community of, of a proposal to come forward that we could all agree on," which, you know, would be, would be nice, if we could come to something at some point that we all agree on. So, thank you.
So, I did have a, similar to what Lisa just had to say, my expectation at this point is that we will see the proposal she referenced sometime on Monday. Later? Okay, so, so we're going to walk into a meeting on the 23rd with yet another bit of new information, which we will not have had much time to see, which staff will not have had much time to evaluate. So it means that we're going to just be a lot of learning on the 23rd, to get some initial feedback on what, you know, what parts of that we wish to incorporate in the measure. And then we'll, we'll have the performance analysis discussion that Commissioner Butt has already referenced, and then updates on where options regarding the urban limit line and the other topics we discussed tonight. But we do have only two more meetings, and I think we ought to assume that the meeting on the 29th might go on longer than 9:00 PM.
That's fine, it's a longer than that.
Right. I suggest maybe we think about the next meeting as going on a bit longer than 9:00 PM? Both of them?
On, on that, may I ask a, sorry.
Commissioner Durant?
Yeah, may I ask a question? I, if, if...
I know you're not here at the next meeting.
No, no, and, and this is not self-serving, because my, my trip may or may not happen, right? It's, no, it, what it really comes down to is, given the short period of time between now and the next meeting, and what we've asked the staff to do, A, B, the fact that they're not going to have anything from the sub-sub group until Tuesday, is it sensible to actually have a meeting next week, as opposed to canceling next week's meeting, continuing with the, the meeting we have on the 29th, and adding one additional meeting in April, so that staff has enough time to actually do all of what we've asked, particularly since we've asked for a couple of legal opinions in here? My, my gut says, given the challenges we had with document circulation and stuff, that we're, we're not going to be able to actually have fully reviewed, digested, and everything else, whatever we're going to get at the 11th hour.
Any, any response, Ross?
I would certainly advise that if we do proceed with a meeting next week, you're going to be getting information very late, and we've committed to quite a bit, I certainly can't speak from all on the, the legal opinion, turning this stuff around takes time, it just takes time. So it's, it's, if, if we're going to meet, you have to give us a certain amount of leeway in terms of getting material in, in front of you.
And we still have two agendized items that are here, that are complete, that we can at least do those, get updates on everything. at least do those, get updates on everything else.
All right.
Right?
Okay.
I'd like to hear the proposals sooner than later.
The only comment on that is, the, the last item was basically to tell you everything that we would be able to do next week, so.
We really have one item.
We really have one item.
Might I add that the reason that there were some problems is we're now getting our email through a different mail server, and we identified that maybe some folks it went directly to their junk mail, and therefore, that's why they didn't get it. And so if you have that problem, please let Teriyan know, because it's a whole new, it comes from Contra Costa Transportation Authority, whereas we used to get things directly from Denise, and so.
And, and the other thing I'd recommend is that you check the Authority website, because downloads are posted there. So if you think, I haven't gotten anything, let me check.
Well, I didn't find that. It said that we were going to see something on the website. I had a hard time finding. I found, I found the original, what do we call that, agenda, but I, I got the updates through the emails.
Okay.
And also, as a person who got nothing whatsoever, how would I know that I need to look when?
I understand.
And this stuff coming out so extremely late, like this, the same day, if, if people have dreams, they have to go through bridges the same day. And I send it out the same day, it's a little like cannot be.
So these are all good suggestions to not meet next week, then?
No.
Do you want to meet or not?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. All right. So I think we'll, so what about then adding a meeting on April, on April 6? Okay. All right.
So, so if we're keeping, New Line is sort of bouncing this. If we're keeping next week's meeting, can we, can we limit it to just what wasn't covered from today's packet?
Yeah, we'll just do that.
Okay. Just, I, and then, and then update on what comes out of the, the EPAC subgroup?
Right.
Okay.
It's all the same subject.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's okay. I just.
All right. So have those items on the, on the agenda. All right. Thank you, Sowery. Commissioner.
And in the meantime, I think we all nodded and said we would take back to RTPCs in local jurisdictions, the discussion we had here about the urban limit line, and do some touching base to see if anybody has a problem with making it retroactive.
Right.
And just so you know, we can't take it to our Board of Supervisors until April 12th, but I don't think that will hold things up. We can figure out how to deal with that.
Okay. All right. So we are adjourned until 6:00 PM next Wednesday, the 23rd. Thank you.